Dr. Ramona Becker.
Here.
Guy McDonald.
Here.
Betty Martin.
Here.
Peggy O'Donnell.
Here.
Diane Nguyen.
Here.
We have a Cora Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you so much, and with all of our regularly scheduled meetings, we will open with a moment of silent prayer. Amen. Now please rise and join in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people who live in Wichita, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everybody to our first meeting of July of your Bel Air City Council. We have a relatively short agenda this evening. Do you want to let council know that we'd like an executive session for, oh, about 25, 30 minutes? The end of our agenda, we can get to that at that time. The first item for council's consideration tonight is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of both the June 7th and the June 21st meeting. And the reason why we have two meetings on this one was the June 7th minutes were tabled so that all the comments made during Citizens Concerns would be transcribed verbatim. And I believe that has been done. As before council this evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Have a first and second. Are there any questions or comments?
I'd like to say it looks like they did a real good job, and I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is appropriations ordinance 16-13 in the amount of $278,264.39. Basically, you know, 20,000 of this went for the 2015 audit, which is nearing its completion. And then 100,000 went towards some debt payments of CCUA, and then 10,000 went towards the capital projects, and the remaining towards our operational costs, salaries, benefits, and the normal day-to-day expenses that we incur.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 16-13.
Second.
First and second. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Just to take the opportunity real quick, just to remind those in the audience and those watching at home that our appropriations ordinances are online and can be viewed by anybody at any time. So you can see down to a penny where your tax salary should be spent.
Spented?
Being spent. So, again, just wanted to remind everybody. Next, we move on to city requested appearances. I have four individuals who have requested to speak. I'll call you up if you come to the podium, set your name, your address, and would ask you keep your comments to three minutes or under. The first person is David Webster. David Webster, if you could just come to the podium, and thank you for being here this evening.
Okay. My name is David Webster. I live at 4731 North Prestwick Avenue in Bel Air. And we have a flooding issue that's been exacerbated by a ditch where somebody dug and the city approved. And it basically is not allowed, water's not running right, and it's actually flooding, starting to encroach in terms of, this last rain, it actually went up to the driveways on a couple of homes, up to the garage doors. So it's gotten worse, and the water's basically rolling over the bank and eating away the dirt that they piled up. So whoever signed off on it, you know, perfection says it's the city, and we have a big problem. So if it rains again, and that dam breaks, then we're going to have worse problems. So it needs to get addressed.
Thank you.
That's it.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Which street did you say you live on?
Prestwick Avenue. That's where the dam's at.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for coming and letting us know. Second issue is Margaret Walker, or second individual, I'm sorry.
Hi. I would just like to add what David said. Excuse me. We, I have a couple of pictures of how the water just almost got up to our front porch. And, but the drainage, what do you call those? The holes that go down on the side of the street?
The culvert's drainage.
Yeah. They are not, it doesn't keep up. And so right in front of our house is, in front of our house, which is at 4827 North Prestwick, and we had the worst of the water. And I have pictures if you need to see them. So I just think we just need to find a solution.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Could you email those to our administrator, our manager, excuse me? Your pictures? And then he could pass them on?
Yeah, if you have our copies, we can be happy to take those.
She has them her town.
Yeah, yeah, we'll make sure you get an email from us.
If you just do it to our manager, that'd be great.
Okay.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Third individual is Rob Lindstedt.
Rob Lindstedt, 5450 East 45th Street. Sorry, I missed the last meeting because of some medical procedures. I wasn't able to come. But I continue to be concerned about a situation with the sewer problem. And wish I could have been here at your previous meeting to try to answer some of the concerns that were raised and some points I think that need clarification. I want to say something concerning Mr. Dunne. So it's the opinion, I guess, of the council that he is the one that's the culprit in this. I heard Councilman Guy McDonald say that probably he would be the one responsible because he has an education. Are we that opposed to education in this city? That if a person has an education, he's the guilty one? Or that he owns a business? Councilman McDonald, some of us voted for you because you had business experience. And now to say that because he has business experience, that's the reason why he would commit fraud? I question that reasoning. And frankly, I can see why the citizens are concerned about that. Fraud has been committed, embezzlement has occurred, theft has occurred, and now an attempt to cover it up. You see, we continue to guess on some of the things, but there's some things that we know. We know who did it. She confessed on television. And if indeed Mr. Dunne made her do it, coerced her into doing it, why then, when he left, did she not say, here's something that's going on that's wrong? So let's assume that the council is correct in saying that Jim Dunne is responsible. That means that for 16 years, the city has been embezzling somewhere around $11,000 a year. Okay, we've been getting three years for $33,000. The crime is much bigger. And the reason I say this is because some in the community say, we don't know that we want the attacks to come on us the way they're going to come on Sunrise and on me. But frankly, the truth is the truth. Why is it? Why is it that residents are now concerned? They want to know, okay, how'd you calculate your school bill? Because we'd like to calculate our residents' bill. When 20% of the residents' bills were wrong in the survey, it says something else needs to be investigated. Frankly, I think there's more to come. I don't think we are at the bottom of it. I think we're just at the beginning. I think there's additional businesses that have been frauded. I think there's additional residents that have been treated incorrectly, improperly. Why? Why is it that we continue to focus on what people are saying, even like myself, and not focusing on what you can do? Isn't that the job of a transparent, responsible government, to focus on what you can do? Why are we the victims if we draw it to your attention? You see, we're talking about the motive, but we know who did the injustice. It might be interesting to say, how did it occur? What steps would have to be done in order for that fraud to occur, in order for that embezzlement to occur? What steps had to be done? I think that might be a very interesting seminar. I think we'd be well attended. And so with that, I simply hope that the council will see fit to say, wow, you know what? We do have a problem. Let's address the problem. Let's get it solved. Instead of continuing to blame those of us that have been frauded that we're the guilty ones? No, we're simply calling it to your attention, as was exposed by confession on television. Thank you.
Next is Michael O'Donnell.
Hello. My name is Dr. Michael O'Donnell. I live at 4218 Eagle Lake Court and resided here since 1996. Appreciate the privilege of serving here, and I appreciate you giving me an opportunity to speak. I did warn the clerk that, as a preacher, I'm used to speaking 30 and 45 minutes, so we will try to curtail that down to your three minutes. And that is difficult, but I will certainly try. We love living here in Bel Air. We moved here because we love the community, love the school, quite frankly. We, I have pastored in Southwest Wichita for over 30 years, and 35 years actually, and have enjoyed that ministry in that area. And, yeah, we realize that education is very important, and community is very important. And so we chose to move here. We told our realtor, we want walking distance. They would show us nice places over on Wood Lawn or other places that's a little far for my kids to walk. And of course, as kids are, I think we lived, there was a, growing up, I think they walked like four or five times the entire school year as they wanted a ride to school. But I just want to take just a quick minute to talk about the situation. I don't always attend the meetings, but I certainly am concerned about how the response to the issue of the sewer overage is being handled. We do a lot of work with people that are incarcerated, people who've had children taken out of the home, and one of the things we tell them regularly is, your problem's not your problem, it's how you deal with it. Because the problem's already passed. We have to feel how we're going to deal with it in the future. And certainly, as I reflected on what we're listening to, is that there's a lot of excuses, and I certainly don't know the details, but I'd like to see us be able to handle the problem effectively, because I don't think there's any doubt, even from those who maybe questioned the motives or questioned how it came about, that there was a problem. And again, we don't know the person's thought. I certainly don't, nor do pretend to know the thoughts in the process. However, one of the things that I do appreciate is the opportunity to discuss these issues. I've listened with great intent to some of the statements were made. I appreciated Mr. McDonald's quotation of scripture in his presentation, and even though sometimes people might not respond well to that, and I apologize for that, by the way, that I think is important. In fact, I would encourage the city to maybe consider even having someone to come in and pray. I pray regularly at the city council meetings and Sazwood County Commission meetings. I prayed at Topeka. And for us to have actually people and clergy in the community to pray, not only is that a right, but it's actually an opportunity for us to be introduced to those who serve the faith community from all different faiths. We're not saying it has to be sectarian, but I think it would be a nice addition to our meetings, and while silent prayer is certainly appropriate, and of course, not offensive, we don't get a chance to maybe hear. I've been in city council meetings where someone from a Native American tradition has prayed, and I've been encouraged by that. So I would just ask you to maybe consider that. I think it would be appropriate, and certainly, we are a people that reflect, as we did on the Fourth of July, faith and its importance. Real quickly, let me just state that as we handle this problem that we are clearly facing, I'm reminded of a story of a little boy named Jimmy. Jimmy was nine years old, and on his nine-year-old birthday, he received a slingshot, and he really enjoyed it. He was in his grandma's backyard playing with a slingshot, and he saw grandma's pet duck walking across the yard, and he put the little rock in the slingshot, pulled it, hit the duck in the side of the head, and killed it. Well, he felt overwhelmed by it. What am I going to do? I'd kill grandma's duck. He'd drug it into the woods. That night, grandma said to his sister, Suzie, Suzie, hey, will you clean the dinner table? And Suzie said, no, I think Jimmy wants to do it. Well, Jimmy said, no, I don't want to do it. And Suzie walked over and whispered in his ear, I saw you killed the duck. And so he goes, I guess I'll do it. And the next day, it came time for chores to be done, and Suzie was told again, hey, you need to take out the trash. He goes, no, I think Jimmy wants to do it. Looked funny again, and she said, remember the duck. And so he continued to do all the chores for his sister for many, many days. Finally, he was so overwhelmed, he went to his grandma and said, grandmother, I'm so sorry, I killed your duck. Grandma said, I know, I saw you do it. Well, why didn't you say anything, grandma? He said, because I wanted to see how long you divert attention from the real problem to come to the position where you can go forward. Appreciate the time you let us visit. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Move on now to reports, and I'd like to say to Dr. O'Donnell, I like that. Thank you, that story about the duck, how you deal with it. And we're continuing to move forward here. And thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. And to those of you who came to speak, the flooding, I was sending, I'll admit, I was texting our city manager. I know it was a weekend, a holiday weekend, but I said, hey, you know, because we'd had some issues beforehand. We have had more rain in the last four weeks than I think, I heard the numbers once, but basically, we've had more rain in the last four weeks than we had like all last year for this area. And that was on top of a very wet spring. So your concerns are heard, they're valid, thank you. I want to tell the people listening at home, if you have pictures of flooding, please do send them to City Hall. That is how we're going to know where there's potential problems, where we need to look at. You know, I'm not an engineer. I'm not, you know, Ann's not here, so I hesitate to say anything at all about that, because I just, I mean, I don't know, I was telling that some of the council members here, I mean, we literally have like a bushel of apples in our backyard that came from our neighbor's, you know, two houses down backyard that I'm picking up because I don't want volunteer apple trees. I mean, we had 10 inches in four hours. So thank you for that. I appreciate you two bringing that and letting us know and then sending the pictures. And again, to those of you at home, if you'll do the same so that we can be aware of that, where the worst problems are. And, you know, hopefully, no one has to build an ark or anything here. We'll just move on with that. But do want to thank everyone for a pretty calm, safe Fourth of July. I asked and heard there were, did not have any reports of any real craziness, no fires, no injuries this year substantially. So I'm glad that went off, and I know we had four different tents here in Bel Air, four different groups that were selling fireworks. I'm sure, I think three of the four were in tents, so I'm sure, I was talking to Mr. McDonald right beforehand, you know, probably lost some business the evenings that it really rained like that. And so just a crazy time. Then in closing, about again, what we talked about with the drainage, we discussed this very briefly at our last workshop the council did, kind of more of a impasse, and as we're looking at drainage studies, in particular, we're looking at a lake, a huge lake here in Bel Air that is used by all of our citizens, that needs to be dredged. Is that the word? Because, and so much of it, and I shared this at the workshop, and I'll share it here too, I personally saw one of my not immediate neighbors, but I live in the neighborhood in the street, so we literally throw trash down the storm drain. And I confronted him about that. We also heard at our last CCUA meeting, having some issues with all these quote-unquote flushable wipes, that they aren't, they're flushable, certainly they'll go down, but we are having some issues with a lot of that. And so when grass clippings and the flushable wipes and the trash and all that go down, those culverts and those strain, you know, I think one of the ladies mentioned about how it's struggling to keep up, you know, we've got all that other debris in there. So I'm just, this is my PSA here, please, people, throw your trash in the trash can, including, you know, your clippings if you can. You know, littering, it ends up in the water. It ends up, where we end up with expensive problems like dredging a lake that used to be four or five feet deep and now is what, a foot deep? Because of all the silt and all the buildup, and we lose wildlife. And, boy, am I going off on a tangent, so I'm going to stop. But again, so thank you for that, and we'll let folks send those pictures in so that our staff can know what's going on. This time, we'll start with council members, and we'll start with Councilmember Martin.
Well, I hope everyone had a great Fourth of July. On the Fourth, I toured the 9/11 exhibit at Kansas Star. It was very impressive. They were taking donations. They also had items there from the Twin Towers. They also had a film clip from Flight 93 that crashed. It was just a very moving deal, and it was very wonderful. And I've been to both of the original sites to see this, and I hope everybody had a great garage sale, and hope that everyone had a wonderful sale at their stands or tents for the Fourth of July. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Very short. You mentioned a safe and sane Fourth of July. I did receive an email from a person who does live here in the Bel Air area, and have to admit that I have some sympathy with his comments. He is a two-hitch Vietnam veteran, and he was really struggling with the noise and how long it went on. And I myself was coming home about 9:30, quarter of 10:00, and it really was hopping out there. And so I hope maybe in some of our workshops or something, we can discuss maybe having some common place that people can go to shoot fireworks and that type of thing. If they get the lake dredged and there's water in there, that's a good place to do things like that. And then the other thing, I was contacted by some of the people who live in the subdivision down south of me, whose name I've known for years and cannot think of it today, but down where the dirt roads are. And they have had some really washouts of roads and things like that. So those of us who have nice paved roads beside our homes and what have you, have a little bit to be thankful for, even if they are full of water, because that's a mess. And so I promised them that I would mention that, and I'll send Ann an email or something as well, to make her aware of that. They are willing to talk about some potential solutions. They don't want curb and guttering. They live there because they're, they want the dirt roads. But there could be some possible solutions that they would be willing to pay part of. So, and that's all I have.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I hope everyone did have a wonderful and safe Fourth of July. I think I received the same email that you did, and I told him that we would be looking into it. And one of the things I was thinking about as I went and walked in a parade was, it would be nice when we get to the point, we can have our city fireworks as a display for the city someday when we get all of this done, and that would be a fun thing to do. And I think it would cut down on some of the stuff in the streets. I did want to say, at the CCUA meeting in June, the audit was not quite ready, so I'll let you know, that always usually comes back okay. And we'll be electing officers, I believe, so you need to be there, Mr. Mayor, at the next meeting, or we might nominate you. I'm just kidding him. I did also want to thank Chief Atterberry and all the officers, Ty and your staff and the public works officials who worked so tirelessly during this current rain. You guys did an amazing job, because this is the first time, I've lived here 20 years, that Eagle Lake, you could not even leave on the south, and so it was flooded. So I appreciate you guys coming and telling us about your problem, and I know a lot of citizens had a lot of flooding, and I really feel bad for them. I also wanted to thank everyone for the many calls and texts and emails I wrote out, so I would not ramble. But since the last meeting on June 21st, I have got several after the three men spoke during Citizens Concern. I did not address it at that time because I wanted to go home, think, and pray about my answer. You know, the Bible says, a soft answer turns ray wrath, and I didn't want to just speak. But we do have a new reporter here, and I'm sure it's difficult for him to know the history or background of a lot, what's going on. So there's a couple of things I wanted to address. First of all, I am employed as a government teacher, a Bible teacher, debate forensics coach, the list goes on. I am employed at Sunrise Christian Academy, and I love teaching there. One of my favorite things is I do teach about our great republic, which was 240 years old yesterday. Second, I do not, nor have I ever voted, because some mayor or other council member have told me to do so. When I vote, I listen to the facts. I often will, if I have questions, listen to whoever is serving as our attorney. I will ask input from citizens if it's something that affects them. I do my research, and I do my best to make a sound decision. No one has a perfect voting record, but I want to say I do my best, and I have always asked, if I ever have a question, when to recuse myself from voting if I feel there is a conflict. And I feel that I have done that for years. Third, since I have served a long time, and all of us as elected officials up here are here to represent the citizens of Bel Air and do what we can to make our city strong. I had a wise lady last week said to me, it is not up to the council to decide whether someone is guilty or not. You are to represent the people and make legislative decisions. The others are for legal authorities. And I thought that was really good advice. For, as stated previously, I moved to Bel Air in 1996 so my children could walk to school. We have been in Southwest Wichita for years, or Hayesville, and my daughter started in 1988. The drive was long and tiring, and then, by then, I had three children enrolled. It was a difficult decision to move, but one I'm glad that we made. It was not until 1997 that I went full-time with Sunrise. My youngest has since graduated way back in 2007, and yet, we have chosen to stay on in Bel Air because we love it here. Fifth, no one was attacked verbally from those that spoke except me. So I got home, and I asked myself, why not Ramona Becker, Guy McDonald, Diane Nguyen, Betty Martin, or why not even Mayor Austin at the time? And the only conclusion that I came up with is that the men who spoke were upset at me for my transparency. I spoke up when I was asked, and I did not give the same answer as the others on the council. Therefore, I guess they felt it necessary to try to bully me or discredit me. However, I teach my students and, at school and at church where I teach Sunday School, that you do not respond and act like the bully. But it's okay to stand up for what you believe in. Others will try to hurt you sometimes, but remember, you're not alone. You do what's right, no matter what. So in closing, I do want to apologize that we are now in our third month of May, June, and July of talking about this. I want the citizens to know that they can trust us. I will work with the staff to do everything I can to figure out how to repay the nine businesses and make sure the citizens continue to want to live here. They need to know that we are an elected group working together to solve this, to do what's right, to have integrity and character. This is not about Betty and I. I met Betty in 1996 when I moved here, and I've known her for years. When I ran in 2005, my son was running for mayor, Michael did at the time, and she was so kind and helpful. Betty and I, along with the mayor and many former council members and some of you, have attended many league meetings. No, this is not about us, even though they want to try to discredit me. This is about the sewer issue, and we have got to go back and focus on that problem. We need to make Bel Air a place where people want to continue to work, play, and live, where companies want to continue to invest and buy, and where people feel safe. And that is how I want to answer. And that is how I want to answer those comments. I also just wanted to state, I'm going to have another surgery next week and I will be gone on July 19th. So I didn't want there to be people thinking, I just didn't want to come. And I would appreciate your thoughts and prayers as I have another surgery. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Just a few short comments, Mr. Mayor. The Bel Air Lions Club did have a sale this past week, as well as three other places that sold fireworks. And the tent, I think it was on Friday, almost blew down. And only for the strength and the courage of a few of the Lions, pretty big men, they prevented that tent from going down. As far as the rain is concerned, I live on Hillcrest, which is a dirt road. And Hillcrest was virtually a creek, just running, flushing, running down. I drove around to see the other dirt roads in town just yesterday and they're all suffering from the consequences of the, we had about 10 and 1/2 inches of rain up in Arthur Heights. So we will address those issues. We will do the best we can. We'll have to speak with the city engineer, of course, and we'll see what our resources are and what some of the answers to that particular problem, what some of the answers are. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Bye.
Well, the first thing on my list tonight was to thank our Public Works Department and the Police Department because they were out keeping everybody safe and closing roads that needed to be closed during this record rainfall. And it is the most rain that ever fell within 24 hours on record for this area. So it has never happened before. And I know that we saw things, all of us probably, that we have never seen before as far as flooding. And I've been emailing back and forth with the city manager all week and sending pictures the last few days. And there are things that we need to look at and make sure that we do the best we can in case this ever happens again. And since they talk about climate change, it's very possible that this could just be the beginning of what's coming. So we really need to look at it, think about what we can do and address these issues. And I will say, I felt like I was very well informed, even though I didn't go outside of my house because I do get, I'm following the Twitter feed from the city. And if you don't have Twitter and have never had it, that's the only thing I follow on Twitter. And I get all the information I need. They're real up to date on things. They kept right up through all of this, on which streets were closed, what you needed to avoid. And it's just very, very helpful. And so I would encourage anybody that doesn't want to do Twitter, I don't want to do Twitter. I don't tweet myself, you know? But I did sign on to follow Bel Air Twitter output because it's just really exceptional. They give us lots of local information and they also give big picture things when it's important. It's not a whole lot, but you'd get a few things every day that are very helpful and meaningful for people that live here in Bel Air. So Tristan is doing a good job on that. It was especially wonderful for, as from my perspective, for me to see this during this time of real need. Because we've had, we had streets flooded in Bel Air that have never flooded before. And if somebody was just gonna go someplace, you'd have to just turn around and come back home if you didn't know which streets were closed. So the city did a great job. The staff did a great job on that. And I've also gotten a lot of comments about the fireworks and complaints. And I know that a lot of people just love fireworks. All of my neighbors. I mean, I would never have to buy a fireworks display of any kind. I wouldn't have to spend a dime on fireworks to see great, wonderful fireworks because we had them in our neighborhood. And so I know that people love fireworks. And then there's another side. Some people don't love fireworks, you know? So we need to be thoughtful of people and animals. I know that for the first time, I actually spent about $60 on medication for two of my dogs that really get frightened about fireworks. I mean, to the point that I'm afraid it might cause a heart attack or a stroke or something. So we spent money on medication for the dogs rather than spending money on fireworks. But, and then there's the issue of people that have PTSD. It's very frightening for individuals with this issue. And I think we need to be considerate and thoughtful. And we do need to discuss this. I have read that there are some cities that have actually gone to noiseless fireworks. And I had never heard of that before this year. But that would be interesting to look into. And I think, like you said, Councilwoman O'Donnell, we need to be thoughtful and address, you know, what's happening. I also asked the city manager if perhaps while we're doing the survey of our residents about what they'd like to see in our future, maybe we could ask them questions about fireworks and get input from our residents about what they think about this and how important it is and all the different angles we need to look at. Because like I said, I know people love them. All of my neighbors loved them. But there are issues. And it's not only dogs, it's cats and it's wild animals. Did you know that some animals, like ducks, will abandon their young because they're so frightened by the fireworks? This happens with squirrels, ducks, other animals. So even, we need to think about our wildlife and what's happening with all the noise and everything. So it's really a big picture issue that we need to think about. I'd like to thank the city for having the brush site open because there were a lot of damaged trees and things like that. And I guess it's gonna be open again this weekend. So if you're cleaning up your yard and all the debris from the flood, because we've got, you know, washed up debris that really needs to be disposed of. And, you know, our trash carrier is very helpful about taking all the trash you put out. You can fill up your trash can and then you can have three big bags, three big trash bags, along with your trash can. So you can put all that yard debris and everything in those bags and they'll take it off. And sometimes, if I can't get everything gone in one week, I'll save it until the next week. You know, I'll put it in my garage and then I'll put it out the next week. So that's something that can help us. I'd also like to thank our new reporter. We didn't know who you were last week. We saw you out there and we didn't know for sure who you were. But I thought you did an exceptional job with your reporting and I appreciated it. It's really amazing when you come in the first time and you just did such a thorough job. So that's, we're glad to have you. I guess our former reporter went to another city, Derby. And so, you know, there's always changes. And welcome to Bel Air. And your name is Taylor Messick, is that right? We're glad you're here, Taylor. I will be at a technology conference on the 19th. So two of us will be gone that day. And I've all signed up and I can't change it now, so.
As long as everyone else is here.
Yeah, if everybody else is here, so don't you guys get sick or anything.
I can't reschedule either.
And so far, it's looking like a relatively light agenda for the 19th as well.
Okay, great. That's super. And I wanted to just follow up a little bit with some of the comments. Like, I'm sure you feel how Betty did because she was transparent, was attacked for being transparent. And so we all have to think about other people. We're all human beings. And she's been discredited also. So you guys can share in the feelings that you've both suffered through this issue. And I'd also like to remind everybody that the mayor said from the beginning that this would be resolved the first part of August. And that time has not yet come. But in the meantime, we've got auditors and everybody, our city attorney and our staff are carefully looking at this issue. So it's not like we have forgotten about it or aren't gonna do anything. It's just that the time that the mayor announced that this would be taken care of is not yet here. So everybody take heart and be assured that we're going to do the right thing. And I think that's all I have to say. I think somebody else said that the council should not judge, and that's right. None of us should judge other people. And we also, so have to be careful about not accusing other people of things. We can't bear false witness and use incinerary language. We have to be careful about that. That's not our place. So again, new reporter, you did an exemplary job and we do appreciate that. Thank you very much. And we're so glad that you came tonight to speak of us. Tell us what's happening on your streets because we need to know about these things and we'll be glad to get your pictures. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. And just to piggyback real quick, you've heard all of us up here talk about fireworks. I remember, what was it, four years ago when we first allowed fireworks? And I was on the council at the time and, well, golly, you want to pack a room, don't worry about overcharges, talk about fireworks. Was it maybe five, five years ago or so? But yeah, it's certainly a hot topic, no pun intended, an emotional topic for both sides. Because I certainly, certainly embrace and see where both sides have that. So it's been a few years, maybe it is time to talk about that again. I'll just say that I, again, I'm glad that the chief was out, glad the police was out and glad that we had a safe, fun time with that. And then second of all, another thing that Dr. Becker talked about too with Twitter. Ty, was that, you were out, were you the one tweeting on Saturday? That was our city, I'm just gonna say it, guys. That was our city manager on a holiday weekend out on Saturday. He's turning red because he didn't want me to say that. I don't know if it's turning red, but I'm doing it. But I just want to give kudos because that was right and beyond, Mr. Lasher. And I think the citizens should know that. And so I thank you up here for that. Personally, personally, I had two friends, I've got one or two friends, but I had two friends who, over the weekend, called me because they saw the Bel Air Twitter feed or the Bel Air Facebook page saying, "Oh, my gosh, we're at the lake." One family was in Oklahoma at a lake, one family was at a lake in Missouri. And I was doing all these day trips. But anyway, going, "Can you run into, check on our house? Here's where our key is. You've got a key, you know our garage code. Get to go check on, make sure our sun pump's running." Because of that. So those were Bel Air families, I'll just say, both on different sides of Woodlawn too, that because of the social media that you talked about, made them go, "Oh, my gosh, I think that's her neighborhood," that alerted them to. Because they were out in the lake where they weren't getting these thunderstorms and they, yeah, pulled up their phone when they saw the Twitter, you know, they weren't getting the alerts or whatever. So, but, so thank you for that. Let's move on to city manager, if you have reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to follow up on, Dr. Becker had mentioned this Saturday, the brush site is open from 9:00 to 1:00. And also, that's the community cleanup day. So there'll be trucks out there. So if people, if you didn't sell things in the garage sale and it's still sitting in your garage and you want to take it out there and get rid of it, or, you know, if you now have a lot of trash that's in your yard because of the flooding, you could put it in a bag and take it out there and they'll get rid of it for you. So that location is about halfway between Webb and Rock on 53rd Street. So I encourage people to go out. I've seen a lot of brush down, to go ahead and take it out this weekend. Any kind of trash you need to get rid of. Now, this will be the last central site for our community cleanup day. The new contract will have actually curb side cleanup. So we'll have to schedule that. We may schedule one this fall. And then we'll start in the spring and the fall every year after that where people will just take whatever they want to get rid of and put it at their curb at a specific date that we work with the waste connections and they'll pick it up that way. So this is the last time, but if you've got things you need to get rid of, large, there's certainly batteries they won't take, tires they won't take. But there's a flyer out there, oil they won't take. So there's a few things that they won't take. But, you know, if it's an old sofa or whatever it may be, they'll take it. So, and we'll be, I think, I think actually they put it on the sign today at 45th and Woodlawn and we'll be getting a lot of information out on social media again. So encourage people to use that. In your packet, you received a letter that was from Sedgwick County Department of Aging that they did their annual audit of the senior center and everything was fine. We met or exceeded all of our requirements that are put in place by the Department of Aging to receive the grant that we received. So that's always good news. And I think that shows why we continue to receive our grant because we're always exceeding what the requirements are. Also in your packet was the semi-annual audit report from the senior club. The city awards them a certain amount every year and they're required to turn in a semi-annual report and then an annual report at the end of the year. So that was included in your packet. And obviously, it's an open record if somebody would like to see that. But it actually tells what events they had in the last six months, number of people attended. And those are numbers that we then use for the senior center to exceed the numbers that are required. So that was in your packet. Wanted to mention, since we're in July, the second quarter of the year's over. And this year, the employee that received the employee of the quarter is Shannon Dewis. He's with the Public Works Department. Council, I think, recognized him a few, a couple of months ago that he was helping people unload brush and such out there. And he does a lot of good things for the city. He's also the city arborist. And he fixes water lines and he mows and just all kinds of things. So we awarded him the employee of the quarter for that and we appreciate what the guys do. And he's not the only one. Most of the time, any of the guys that are out there working will help somebody unload brush and stuff. So, and then the last thing, I, again, since we ended June, to date, we've had 33 new houses go in. At the same time, last year, we were at 16. So we're double what we were at last year. Our total value for this year is about $8.2 million worth of building that was going in. So again, we're just really happy that people are looking at Bel Air and that it shows in our growth. So that's all ahead, Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. With that, let's move to our one and only agenda item for the evening. That is an ordinance related to insurance proceeds. One of the legislative changes that occurred this year deals with insurance claims by the city for cleaning up property that was destroyed and left by the property owner. You know, so, you know, something like a tornado or fire or something destroys your house and you get the insurance money. Prior to July 1st of this year, so just a few days ago, the city could only place a lien for cleaning up an abandoned property from a fire. The new law allows the city to assess a lien on property that was cleaned up by the city for any type of damage. So that goes beyond a fire, you know, such as a tornado. And so that's good. We hope we don't have tornadoes, but it's there. Allison drafted the ordinance, our city attorney did, to follow the state statute and gave, and give the city greater ability to collect the cost incurred by, to clean up a destroyed property. So I just want to see if there was a motion to approve the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to make a motion to approve an ordinance concerning the adoption of Chapter 2, Article 10 of the Municipal Code of Bel Air, Kansas, in connection with the collection of insurance proceeds, all within the city of Bel Air, Sedgwick County, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, any questions or comments? Is an ordinance, so it does have a roll call, Dr. Becker? Dr. Becker?
Aye.
Guy McDonald?
Aye.
Betty Martin?
Aye.
Peggy O'Donnell?
Aye.
Diane Nguyen?
Aye.
It passes, okay. Guess with the short meeting, we'd like to entertain a motion to go into an executive session for about 25 minutes for confidential data of a private business and invite our city manager and city real estate advisor, Marlon Penner, to join us.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, have fun. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session at 7:50. We are in executive session at 7:50. We are in executive session at 7:50.